October 22nd.
As long as it's kind of focused.
Oh, forget it. Forget it. I saw his, I just saw his finger.
Oh, so I don't need to? Okay.
Yeah, it's on first and then we'll go. Because we give them that.
Uh, thank you.
Who's what?
Just so you know.
Born employee. So somebody that like works for the city and gives us information and stuff. Those of us that are up here are elected, but we've got employees like our trusted finance manager and our city clerks and others. I just finished grading all of your form pages. He's got down, he's got it all planned out. I'm gonna screw up his record. I feel such a burden lifted. And if I have to read one more, I'm gonna come undone. Somehow I think it's my own fault. Okay, welcome. We'd like to time to start our city council meeting. The mayor's asked me to excuse tonight, so I'll be running the show, I guess, tonight to see how it goes. Like the welcome looks like we must have a high school government class or something going on. Even during harvest break, these kids are hard at work. Yes. Might be most interesting night you've ever had, so. Like start our meeting, I've asked council member Eric Erickson to give us a prayer, and council member Chambers to give us the, give us in the pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be gathered here this evening. We're grateful for the opportunity of being able to participate in governance here in our wonderful city. We, um, we're grateful for the, the, the country that we live in and for the blessings and opportunities and freedoms that we enjoy. We pray that thy Spirit will be with those who are vying for leadership in our, in our country at this time. We pray that they might be guided to say and do those things which will, um, bring us together in unity as a country. We are thankful to be here this evening and pray thy Spirit to guide us in the decisions that we make, that we may do everything for the betterment of our community. And, um, and we thank you once again for the opportunity to be here and pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are you on there? You want to do a roll call to council members?
Yes. Council member Dotson, here. Council member Chambers.
Here.
Council member C Erickson.
Here.
Council member E Erickson.
Here.
Council member E sir.
Here.
And council president Walker.
Here. Thank you. Now I have a presentation by the police department for some recognition of some certificate awards. Steve Rhodes.
Thank you. We appreciate you letting us recognize some of our officers and their accomplishments here in the council. There are a lot of things that go on behind the scenes with the police department with certifications and trainings and we keep a lot of those in-house. We don't want to bombard you with all of them, but some of the more significant ones are the ones that we, we try to bring to you. And if I could get Lieutenant Scott, Lieutenant Sean Scott to come up. Lieutenant Scott has been with Rexburg Police Department since 2011. Prior to being with Rexburg, he worked for Madison County Sheriff's Department and then Bonneville County Sheriff's Department in corrections, starting in 2005. So the, the certificate that he just received from the Idaho Post is, it's the management certificate? I'll give this to him. The, the management certificate requires a lot of, a lot of time and a lot of training. It requires over 100 hours of training specific to leadership at a, at a higher level than just our normal trainings. And so it takes a long time and that's something that we focus on at the police department is trying to help our leaders continue to get better and better. So we appreciate Lieutenant Scott for all he does for our department. He's, he's been a huge asset to our department. He was involved in community policing for several years, almost 10 years. And then K-9, he's been a patrol sergeant, now our patrol lieutenant. And so we just want to recognize him for this great accomplishment through the Idaho Post for receiving his management certificate, so. This, uh, this next one, if I could have council member Erickson, do you mind?
You have to.
You want to just?
Do they say here?
You can stay there if you want. So, um, so a few months ago, we had a meeting that, I was gonna say Lieutenant Erickson, but council member Erickson wasn't able to attend and it was a meeting where we were able to recognize the officers and the detectives and the joint efforts put into the Daybell case. And we had it at the romance. I know some of you were in attendance. And we didn't get the opportunity to, to recognize council member Erickson for his efforts at that time. In the meeting, we, we issued or awarded everyone with a chief's commendation pin. And it's a pin that officers can wear on their, their Class A uniforms for different, different things throughout the department that they can earn. There's several different life-saving awards. But the chief's commendation is recognition for, for officers that go above and beyond. So I'm just gonna read a, a quick letter that we wrote for each individual. So individually, um, sorry, there's two different ones here. So November 19th, or November 2019, at the request of Gilbert, Arizona Police Department, their expert police department began looking for a Jeep belonging to Tylee Ryan. Short time later, expert police were requested to conduct a welfare check on Tylee Ryan and J.J. Vallow. When the case first began to unfold, we, we discovered that Tylee Ryan and J.J. Vallow were missing. We could not have comprehended how much this case would change all of us as individuals, as a department, and as a community. The gravity of the situation, the urgency to find the children, the deep concern for their safety brought a sense of purpose and determination to every member of our team. This case affected some more than others, but all in their own way. The complexities and darkness of this case caused sleepless nights, flashbacks, and immense stress. It also impacted our families and as many of you spent extended time away from home during the investigation, trial preparation, and especially during the trials. The personal sacrifices made during this time were significant and are deeply appreciated. It is with great pride and deep respect that I write this commendation to recognize the exceptional hard work, sacrifice, dedication, and unparalleled cooperation demonstrated by our team in the successful prosecution of Chad and Lori Daybell. Your unwavering commitment to justice has not only brought a measure of closure to the families and victims, but also reaffirmed the integrity and resolve of our department. The investigation into the tragic deaths of Tylee Ryan, J.J. Vallow, and Tamara Daybell were both emotionally and physically demanding. Each of you faced immense challenges and endured personal sacrifice to ensure that justice was served. Your tireless effort, efforts in gathering evidence, conducting thorough investigation, and supporting the prosecution were instrumental in bringing Chad and Lori Daybell to justice. This commendation is, is a testament to the exemplary character and professionalism you exhibited throughout the extremely difficult process. Your collective resolve and dedication to the victims and their families have left a permanent mark on our community and have set a standard of excellence for all of us. Individually, each of you played a crucial role in this investigation. Retired Lieutenant Colin Erickson, your meticulous attention to detail, unwavering pursuit of truth, and cooperation with other agencies brought justice for the victims in this case. Your hard work and dedication have not only honored the memories of Tylee, J.J., and Tamara, but have also strengthened the bond between our department and the community we serve. You have exemplified, exemplified the true spirit of law enforcement and our efforts have brought hope and healing to those affected by these tragic events. On behalf of the Rexburg Police Department, I extend my heartfelt gratitude and award you with the Rexburg Police Department Chief's Commendation Award. Your contributions have made a profound impact and your legacy of justice will, will endure with deepest respects and appreciation. So this is a, the letter for, for each of the officers involved. We can't express how much gratitude we have for the sacrifices all the officers made, the detectives made. And I know, being retired, not having the, the full uniform with the pin, but we, we do want to issue you this pin and apologize we didn't get it to you sooner, so. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations for all you guys do. Makes our community a lot safer and a better place to live. Appreciate it. Have time now, now we have a presentation on open primaries initiative proposition one by Hiram Erickson. Time over to Mr. Erickson.
Um, I can.
Yeah, just roll it.
Members of the city council, my name is Hiram Erickson. I live at 505 East Second South here in Rexburg. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today. I recognize that this does not directly impact city elections, so I'm gonna be very quick. But I, it, it is very important. It's gonna be on the ballot in 35 days and you're gonna get a lot of questions about it, just given your position in the community. I wanted to make sure that you understood it and, and had an opportunity to ask any questions if, if you've had any to raise. So the, let's see if I can. There we see the, the problem that proposition one purports to solve. Since 2011, the, in 2011, the Republican Party closed their primaries, which means that in order to vote in a Republican primary, you have to be registered as a Republican. Prior to 2011, that was not the case. In, in Madison County, I use this as my example because I know it. In Madison County, we've not had a contested general election for as long as I can remember. If there has been one, it hasn't been seriously contested. What that means is that as a practical matter, if you're a Democrat or if you're an independent in Madison County, you haven't participated in the process of choosing who is representing you at the House or the State Senate. The numbers for the 2004 Republican primary are there. In 2004, 35% of all registered Republicans in the state participated. That equates to 20% of all registered Republicans. As a practical matter, that means that you can win a Republican primary with 11% of registered voters. And in many districts in Idaho, that means there's not going to be a contested general, that you are winning elections with 11%, and that 11% is, is important. I'm a, I'm a, I, I'm a registered Republican, have been my entire life. I currently serve as a precinct committeeman here in Rexburg. Some of the consequences of the closed primary, everybody joins the Republican Party. We all know that there are people that don't have any particular affinity with the party that have joined the Republican Party just because they want to vote in that election. Special interest groups only need to influence a few voters. They know who they need to target. It also creates negative incentives, incentives for candidates. When you've got that kind of a low turnout election, you focus your attention on getting your base voters out. And the most effective way to get your base voters out is to make them angry or to make them scared. And, and you see that consistently in, in political advertisements in Idaho. And, and I would suggest that, that you see that more in the last 10 years than you did prior to the closing of the primary. Fear and, and contempt are always effective campaigns, but, but right now, that is almost the, the only mechanism people are using. So the solution, this is what is Prop One. It proposes a nonpartisan top-four open primary. So rather than a Republican primary and a Democratic primary, and then the two of them go to the general election, it's a top-four primary. Everybody is on the same ballot in the primary. You go, you vote for your favorite candidate. The top four vote-getters in the primary, regardless of party, move on to the general election. In Idaho, that creates an immediate and obvious problem. You're going to have three Republicans and one Democrat. You might sometimes get two Republicans, a Libertarian, and a Democrat. But, but that's gonna be your basic structure. So in the general election, it uses what's called an instant runoff or ranked choice voting to address the vote-splitting problem. Because clearly, the right outcome is not to have the Republicans split their 60, 65% of the vote and a Democrat win with 30, 35%. That's just, that's just not the right outcome. It's not reflective of the preferences of the voters. The, the benefits, let me see if I've got. Let, let me talk to you just briefly and, and I am going at warp speed. This generally, I'll take 15, 20 minutes on. I'm, I know you've got other things that you need to do tonight. This, this is what the primary ballot looks like. This is the senator's race. This is the House race. This is from Alaska in 2022. That's the only state currently that has this precise setup. It is on the ballot in six other states, six states in addition to Idaho this year. So, so it is, it is being, I, I hope adopted, certainly considered in other states as well. This is what the ballot looks, looked like in Alaska. So you would go, you would identify your first choice, mark that, then identify your second choice, mark that, identify your third choice, mark that, identify your fourth choice if you wanted to and mark that. You're not under any obligation to vote for all, for all four. You don't have to rank all of them. There's good reasons why people sometimes don't. If you can imagine a race where you have Superman, Doofus number one, Doofus number two, and Doofus number three, you may vote for Superman and be entirely ambivalent over which of the Doofi, uh, win. You, you don't have a preference. You just simply do not care, so you don't identify a preference in your ballot. And, and you can see that happening and it, it happened in Alaska. It happens other places. There are reasons why people intentionally do not fill out their entire, all of the options available to them. So, so the benefits. The, the first and most obvious is that it allows all Idahoans, all Idaho voters to participate in all of the elections that they are paying for. Because right now, um, if, if you're an independent or if you're a Democrat or a constitutionalist or a Libertarian, um, you, you don't get to participate in the election that is more likely than not determining who will represent you. For candidates, both the existence of the open primary and then the ranked choice voting, it means that you can't rely on that small sliver of, of dedicated voters to come out and vote for you. Because you can't win with 30% of the electorate that loves you to death if 70% hates you. Because in order to win in the, in the general, you have to have 50% of the vote. I just realized I didn't actually explain how the, the general election works. You've got four candidates. Everybody, the first round, the first-place votes are counted. If somebody gets to 50%, that person is the winner. And in Alaska, in 60 of their 70 races, somebody, it's either 60 or 70 or 50 of 60. But in, in all but 10, for the state legislature, somebody got to 50% in the first round and there was no second round. If a second round is necessary, you remove the bottom vote-getter. And if a voter voted for that person who has now been removed, then their next preferred candidate counts. It is functionally the same as having four candidates. You run a, run an election, nobody gets to 50%, so you remove one candidate and then run another election. And, and people can show up and vote for these three. The question being asked to the voters is, if your preferred candidate is not available, who then would you prefer? That process continues until you either get to two, at which point there will be someone with 50% or until someone hits 50%. So that means that you can't win with 30% of the people that will always vote for you come hell or high water, but the, but being profoundly unpopular with the other 70%. It encourages coalition building. It encourages you to talk to people who may not be your natural base. It disincentivizes scorched earth politics and it guarantees that everyone in the state has an opportunity to vote in these elections. That's it. Fire hose, very fast. Are there questions?
Hiram, thank you for that presentation. I think there's a lot of confusion over this in the state right now. Mostly produced by politicians who, who want to protect themselves. But two questions that always come up. The first one is, um, you, the, the second-place winner sometimes can win. I, I saw that post, that sometimes the, the number-one choice, after you go to a second round, maybe that guy, he got the most votes in the first round.
Sure.
But maybe he loses in the second round, which for some people, that's a problem.
Right.
So explain that to me.
So, so what you're describing is, is certainly mathematically possible. It's, it's not, it, it is not the most common outcome. Most of the time, the person that is ahead, particularly when you've only got four candidates, most of the time, the person that is ahead after the first round is going to end up crossing that 50% threshold first, but not all the time. You can imagine a scenario where, where votes are fairly, all four are relatively popular. So they're all right around 25%, but one of them's just a little bit ahead. But that person is popular with 25 or 30%, but unpopular with the rest. And in that scenario, if you remove the lowest-place voter, they probably didn't rank, the, the voters that voted for the fourth-place person probably didn't rank that guy second. So in that scenario, yes, somebody else may very well pass them. I would suggest that that is not a, a bug, that that is a feature. Because you do want candidates with a broad appeal. So, so the answer to the question is yes, that is certainly something that mathematically can happen. It's the exception, not the rule, but when it does happen, that's okay. That's the way the system is designed and I would suggest that that is a better design than the one that we have now.
So then in that scenario, so then wouldn't that person that won, didn't they get more votes total, though?
They did.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and essentially what you have is you can, this could be set up in a different way. This is called an instant runoff. But you can imagine us as a state deciding that we're gonna do a, an ordinary runoff. We're gonna bring four candidates in, run an election. If anybody gets to 50%, they win. If they don't, we'll bring everybody back in two weeks and run another election. Just without, just with three rather than four. And then you may have somebody different that second time with more votes. So, yes, that, they always, one person, one vote is a thing. You only have one vote and it goes to whichever candidate you prefer that is still available for you to vote for. So, so yeah, that person got more votes.
One more point that keeps popping up, and that is this idea that if you do not rank your choices, you just vote for the one person in the first round and don't vote for the other four, that somehow your vote doesn't count if it goes to a second or third round.
Right.
So can you address that?
Yeah, I, I think if I am, if I am being charitable, I would describe that as someone misunderstanding the process. If I'm being less charitable, I would suggest that there are some people that are intentionally trying to scare people by misrepresenting what happens. Your vote for the fourth-place candidate, if that's who you voted for, absolutely counted. He just lost. That happens all the time. We all have voted for candidates that didn't win. My vote still counted. Now, if you chose not to rank the other three because you didn't have a preference as between those three, then you didn't participate in the, the, though, the, the runoff between those three candidates. But that's a choice made by the voter. Your, your vote absolutely did count. It did count. No ballots are ever discarded. Okay. If, if any of you think this is a brilliant idea and we should absolutely do it and you would like to help, please feel free to reach out to me and we can figure out how you can do that. Thank you.
If they have any questions for Hiram.
I just wanted, so if we did have other questions or we wanted to talk to you, then how do we contact you?
I'm pretty sure Eric has my phone number. I can give it to you right now if you'd like. I'm gonna step away from the mic for a second.
You can just write it, you can just write it right here.
Brayden, I'll pass that down when you're done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you read that? Because my handwriting is profound.
Is it 4034?
Anybody else have any other questions for Hiram?
Thank you and I very much appreciate your time.
Thank you. We now have time for, now so time for public comment. Is anyone who'd like to make public comment? Items not on the agenda? If, anybody online? Murphy, then we'll move right into our staff reports. Matt Nelson with our finance.
All right, it should be pretty quick. So we do have a budget adjustment request. As you guys know, they've been working on the masonry work over at the Romance Theater. So a few change orders have popped up. So a few change orders have popped up. And if you look at the packet that I provided, we had them itemize those. So there ended up being about six or seven different items. But we went through those as staff. I won't go through them all, but some of them we backed off just because they were already in the budget. Some of them, we felt like it would be best to just hold off and then maybe have someone else bid, because they were a little higher than we felt like we needed to pay. But a couple of them that we did recommend, so there was some damaged bricks that potentially we would want to fix while they're there. And then, we talked about those window metal covers or grates that are on the backside and then the one on the side. Our thought was maybe pull those off while the masonry people are there so that they can fill those holes and do the work around those. And then Jed would go and get the windows that are there, because if you've looked at them, a lot of the windows are just sitting in there. And then pull those aside so that when we did decide to address those windows down the road, we could reuse that glass. And then, the other one that came up, the big one here, is the ceiling of the outside, which we did do the ceiling on the tabernacle. So when they did that job, they sealed it. But when we went to SHPO, who is the state historical preservation office, they basically asked us to remove that line item. But as we've looked at that, our contractor and, we also had another party that we consulted with, both recommend that we do that. We looked at the price that came back, this $20,001.63. We actually felt like that was a great price. So what we're asking for tonight is, we really don't want to move forward with that unless we can convince SHPO that it would make sense to do. And so we have a phone call with them next week. We're going to talk through it. So what we're requesting is, if you guys are in favor of doing the ceiling, we're requesting a budget adjustment of $25,000. If for some reason we can't do that, then we're only asking for a $5,000 budget adjustment to address those smaller items. And so, hopefully that made sense, and I'm sure there might be some questions, but that's essentially what we're asking for tonight.
I've got a quick question for you. I remember when we talked about repointing the brick there while the workers were there working on the tabernacle. It's because of a, it was because of a drain that kind of figured, or at least that was the first idea, is maybe it was from a roof drain. Were they ever able to pinpoint exactly why there was water infiltration there that eroded?
I don't. Keith, do you remember the reason why on that?
No, I mean, because we did go through the drain and look at that, and everything was good there. Some of their concerns is just moisture getting in into the building on the cracks along the bottom down there. Some of that is, those walls probably aren't sealed like they are today. Whenever you do a foundation, you have a membrane or a tar around that foundation. And so those, and all the buildings were more set up to breathe through there, and then as you plaster and paint the inside, you'll get that moisture coming in and then getting in pockets.
Yeah. We did have, the contractor had us come over and also look at the roof. So there's a membrane, and I think we looked, did we decide it was 14 years old? I think about 14 years old we put that membrane roof on. And there are a lot of spots where it's come up, and so there's, probably is a little water getting in. But that is a separate item, so we just, we're going to work with the roofing contractor on that, and we suspect that repair will probably be $2,000 to $3,000 bucks. But we felt like we should definitely seal that back up, so.
So, did SHPO give you any indication of why they didn't think we should seal the building? Is it an appearance thing, or a?
You know, I wasn't, I'm probably not the best person to speak to that. I don't know if Keith remembers, but I know that they basically almost redlined it and said, "We don't recommend that," essentially, for those historic buildings. And, I mean, I think it's kind of the opinion of them and the opinion of the people we're relying on, right? The contractor and this consultant. And so that's why we're going to try to get them to the table, so they can talk through that and see if there's any movement on their part.
Will the sealer change the appearance? I mean, does it change the color or look of the brick?
I don't know that it would change a whole lot. I'm not sure I could answer that. The tabernacle, I mean, it's, obviously it's changed a little, but the cleaning probably does as much change as the sealant. But it would definitely help to, you know, keep that moisture from coming through. And I, as I talked to Orlando, who's the contractor, he doesn't actually give the prices. He sends it to their home office, and they send the prices back, and we kind of looked at it, and he felt like that was a pretty good price that they gave, because that stuff's about 400 bucks a gallon, that sealer.
Did, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just, so I remember when we were talking about pickleball, and when I asked if we could keep the rest of the pickleball money, that you said that our contingency was getting a little low. So, you're comfortable with taking this out of our contingency?
Well, this would come out of your contingency. So, what I was referring to with the pickleball specifically is going to be your carryover. And so, we won't know that still, because we're still, you know, all of your expenses, almost 1.4 million that we expensed tonight, plus the next one will get accrued back to our prior fiscal year. And then at some point, once we've kind of closed the books, I'll come back to you guys, and I'll basically say, "How much are you comfortable carrying over?" And we'll give you a percent. Our policy's between 25 and 33%. And so I think at that point, we can make that decision and then decide. But this would come out of that contingency, the $139,100 that we passed for the fiscal year that basically started two days ago.
So Matt, a question on going back to the roofing. Do we have budget for that, to have that fixed, or?
We would just do it out of repairs. We do have a.
To me, that's probably a priority, because it's going to continue to leak and.
Yeah, yeah. And we, I don't know if Keith got the price back yet, but we just engaged them maybe five days ago, so.
Okay. Well, we do have the budget for that on.
Yeah. Because, like I say, we'll just pull it out of the operating expense that's in there for repairs.
And then with the sealer, did the same organization, SHPO, did they approve the sealant to go on the tabernacle?
We did not have to have their approval.
Oh, but we do for the romance.
We do because of an encumbrance for money that we took through a federal grant.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? We have a motion on this matter.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the budget adjustment for the Romance Theater.
You have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reese. Any other questions, discussion?
I just have one thing to say. I know I have the unpopular opinion here, but I'm just going to have to vote no on it, because I feel like these buildings are just, you know, it's just more money, more money, more money, and I feel like I have other priorities, and some of these things have, you know, it's been 40 years that they've needed to be done, so it's not like they have to be done right now. I feel like we should be budgeting for them and not going over budget, so that's just my opinion on it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
If that motion passes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Matt? Thanks, Matt. Keith, you're on.
Thanks. I have one item for the council tonight. So we received that Thriving Communities grant like a year and a half ago, and part of that grant, we get a $90,000 grant, and we were looking at doing a feasibility study for Fifth West River Crossing there to go to the north. And we went through an RFQ, so Request for Qualifications. We had four firms submit on that. We had, it was Horox, Forsgren, Keller, and CTL. CTL is a company that's back east. And as we went through that, the selection committee selected Forsgren for that. So we're seeking approval from the council to enter into a contract with Forsgren on that.
Got a question. Keith, we had some questions we wanted to ask Forsgren before awarding. Did you get those questions?
Yes, we did, and they can meet the timeline that we're requesting it to be done in. So, we're looking at, with the feasibility study, we're looking at applying for a RACE grant, so that's a $15, $20 million grant through the federal government. And this feasibility study will help us in applying for that grant.
And I can't remember the timeline on this. Can you just refresh us of what your hopeful timeline is on all of it?
So, to have the majority of the feasibility study done by January of next, this next coming year. So, because generally, the RACE grant is due, they haven't said the time officially yet, but last year it was towards the end of February. So we feel like that'd give us enough time to really solidify our application for that grant.
Any other questions? We have a motion on this feasibility study.
I'll make that motion to award to Forsgren Associates.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Chambers. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Don't have any mayor's business, because I'm not the mayor, not having business, so. Okay, we have item eight, items for consideration. First one is Allen Parkinson, you're, is he here?
Stevens.
Oh, Stevens, do it.
Mr. Chairman. I've got to probably declare a conflict of interest here and ask that I be recused from the discussion.
Okay, so done.
What order do these show up?
First one is the comprehensive plan amendment. The 312 and 316 ground loop.
Yes, we acknowledge Councilman Erickson has a basis for recusing himself from the conversation. Yes, Councilman Erickson, you, you just stay right there. By the way, congratulations on your pin. I'd like to see you in your Class A uniform next meeting.
I don't have one anymore. Give it back.
It's like me, it probably doesn't fit anymore.
Probably won't fit.
I gotta get these in order. This, if you're not familiar, this is an area over on Trejo, just off of Trejo, and it is a, currently a vacant, there are two vacant parcels over there, approximately one and a half acres, a little less than one and a half acres. They have not been, at the risk of offending John, they have not been successful in selling them as commercial properties. And so they're seeking to have the comprehensive plan amended, which would allow them to be rezoned to, for residential purposes. And other, the recommendation from planning and zoning was to approve. Questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Bagley is present, if there were questions, but I don't know that we, you've seen the recommendation from the planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning amendments are pretty clear, too.
Yeah, it's in one of those neighborhoods that we have a mix of uses. There are residential uses to the south and to the north and to the west, kind of. The church is really to the west, so the next available zone is single-family residential to the west. So it's one of those areas in the city where there's a hybrid of uses, all within 1,000 feet of these two parcels.
So I do have a couple of questions, if I can answer.
Sure.
Have an answer. You know, we've talked to, from Scott several times about commercial property being lacking in the city. I guess my concern is that we do have commercial property there, and now we're going to move it to residential, where we're lacking on commercial property throughout the city. Do you know how much commercial property we have available for people, or? Because every time Scott says, "We're lacking on the commercial property, we need more of it, and we need more of it, and now we're going to take some and move it to residential."
I believe what, when you say Scott, you're referring to Mr. Johnson. I think what he has indicated is, the availability of Class A commercial property is what we are lacking. And there has to be a willingness on the part of a developer to go out and build the appropriate office space. We don't really have much control over that. These two parcels have been available at a reasonable, I don't know that I'm the best, the best judgment of that. I was going to say price, but yeah, for 20 years, this has been available as a business park, and the only business that has really developed in there, the East Idaho Credit Union built on the one corner, and then up above is a commercial complex of mixed uses that has been in, you know, gone through a number of different businesses over the years. To the east, there has been a commercial, a successful commercial development, but it's a low-profile commercial development. It's not the types of properties that Mr. Johnson has indicated we're lacking on. We have a number of commercial parcels available throughout the city that would accommodate the same types of uses that have been attempted here. But for whatever reason, planning and zoning felt like this had given it the good old college try, and they saw no reason not to recommend approval of rezoning it, or redesignating it on the comp plan.
In planning and zoning, I know they brought up that there's going to be another commercial going in next year, just to the north of this, on the east side of office buildings. I don't know what that is, I don't know if they could even say that, but it was brought up in planning and zoning.
To the north and east of this is the current Melaleuca warehouse?
Northwest, so it's on the same lots. I mean, it's just.
Northwest, up in the northwest corner there, there are still parcels available for commercial use.
And it sounds like someone's going to get built there, commercialized this next.
I'm not aware of that.
That's what they said in planning and zoning, so I just wonder if that's going to influence this at all, as coming next to another residential. I mean.
There's apartments along the bottom.
John, if you're going to, if you're going to talk, you got to come up here and introduce yourself.
Okay. Can I do that?
You got it.
Yeah.
Come on up to this mic here. Is this one on?
Yes. There are apartments, or townhouses, all on the bottom of that map.
If he were to do what I just asked him to do, he would have said, "My name is John Bagley."
My name is John Bagley. I'm a stranger to everybody here. There's townhouses along the bottom. Straight north of the one, the, not the square piece, but the trapezoid type piece, that lot has been sold. We sold it four or five years ago. We finally got that one sold. And I believe they're planning on doing a commercial building there. Our plan is, we want to build some townhomes, some high-end townhomes. I'm getting to be an old man, and I've got a lot of stairs in my house, and I need something lower to get into. But it's, if they bring that up on the map and show you everything that's been done there. We'll get there.
And I'd like to say, I listened to planning and zoning, and I really like what you're looking at doing there, but the only problem I have is that we have to go off of what the zoning's going to be.
Yep.
And that could be, I mean, say something happened to you tomorrow, and you, something, your wife sold it, it could be up to.
No, I understand.
Of that, that's my concern. I like what you're suggesting, but we can't rule on that. We can't vote on that.
See, right there, see, these are all townhouses, right here. Right along here, that's all townhouses. These two lots finally got sold. We've been trying. Judy Hobbs has been working on this, you know, in my, I had a bunch of lots out in Henry Smart Plaza. We finally, I bought them in about, I don't know, six. It was during the recession. I bought them out there, picked up about 10 lots. We got rid of the last two about two months ago. So when they tell me commercial property is in high demand, we had about eight lots out there that we finally got rid of the last two. I was, I was serving. I was, I was serving at Martin's Cove when it happened, so it's, it's been a long time coming. I'm having a hard time believing the, well, we're not short of the type of commercial property that I've got, which is typical. I missed the deal on this, but anyway, we want to back the, have one right there next to that one, and these will be low, you know, they'll be two-story, but that's all, you know, they're being upstairs, but, but I understand your concerns. Any other questions?
Do we have any questions?
I just have a comment.
Okay.
I listened to all the planning and zoning, too, and I just, I feel like in this area it could go either way, but after listening to everything and hearing the other people who spoke, I feel more inclined to want to keep it commercial myself, that's just how I feel, so, but, because we can't do it based on just one development, I feel like in planning and zoning, they talked about that more than I'm accustomed to hearing talked about when we're making these decisions, because we can't base it off of one developer's idea, so I feel commercial, you know, keeping it there is what I feel inclined to do.
I've got a quick question. What's the zoning on those townhomes right now? Would this zoning?
Medium density residential.
Is it, so medium density residential one, so basically, it would match what's across the street?
Except those are not built to medium density.
Except for what's that?
They're not built to medium density, the townhouses.
The current ones that are already existing?
Right, that's not, that's not medium density, that's not sixteen units per acre.
What is it?
My guess is LDR three.
This, this was built, this entire area here is built out as a one project, and I don't know what their total acreage density was, but I know what they started out asking.
Yeah, but those, but that's not MDR one, those aren't.
So, even though it's zoned, MDR?
Yeah, they talked about that in planning and zoning, those aren't built to MDR one.
They're built to something less?
Like LDR three.
It has to be less, that, right?
Yes.
These would be less also if I'm building them, because the plan we've got requires big buildings, two-car garages, big two-car garages, everything's on the main floor, living room, master bedroom, that kind of stuff, and so that corner lot there, we'd get four units, perhaps five, but it looks like four is the best we can do. The second unit, the second lot over, would get five units, six if we squeezed them, but we went MDR one, or whatever it is, so that we could build within fifteen feet of the property line, so we could have bigger units, less of them.
Okay, any more questions for Mr. Bagley?
I do have one more question. So, is that something we do regularly as we zone up, so that you can have a setback that's closer to the road?
We, we don't get involved in it, we, as, as you've been told, I think probably more times than you want to remember, we don't zone to projects, we zone for the zone.
Yeah, well, I feel like in planning and zoning, we were zoning to a project, so.
Yeah, I wasn't there. So, yeah, you should just always consider worst-case scenario, unless you want to conditionally rezone, and then you can put some restrictions on it.
Okay, there's no more questions. Do we have a motion on?
This is, could I ask another question?
Sure.
Mr. Zalnba brought this up. So, could we, you just, that last sentence you said.
Wrong, wrong hearing, technically. This is the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so that's a next.
Redesignate, yeah, you'd have to go to commercial, I'm not aware of any mechanism that allows you to take your, your, you know, the medium in which you're going to work, which is the comprehensive plan, and conditionally designate that. Once you decide that this is, you know, that this could be done on canvas as opposed to paper, then you can start deciding whether it's going to be oil, or some other type of art that you're going to paint on it with your zoning ordinance. So, in this particular juncture in time, I'm, I don't believe there is a conditional mechanism for getting there.
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
But I do think that's something important to remember, is that, using your analogy, once you change the comp plan, you are saying that that is what you expect to see there, so it's not just for these lots, you're saying, in that area, and I know we already have a bunch of uses there, so it's a little like, go either way, but it's just something to consider with the area, is MDR one, you know, is that a fit for that area to put more of that there, so, just something to think about.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion on this?
Well, I'll make a motion, but it's probably not one people are going to vote for.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion that we don't approve, planning and zoning's recommendation to change the comprehensive plan from commercial to intermediate residential.
Okay. Here a motion by Councilmember Johnson, to not approve the comprehensive plan change, do I have, is there a second? No seconds. Okay, do we have a motion? Another motion?
For the record, her motion fails for lack of a second.
Second, okay.
Could I ask another question? Not of anybody, but maybe just to discuss as a council.
Yeah, this is discussion time.
What are we kind of looking, I guess, the thing that pops into my head is what, I mean, I'm kind of reluctant to change the comprehensive plan, but is this going to be beneficial, because it's going to allow more housing to be built? I mean, that's all I hear, is that there's not enough housing, of course, at least from what I understand, the type of housing that's going to be built isn't necessarily going to get young families that are struggling to get out of an apartment, and into their first, "I own a home" situation kind of a thing. So, what kind of need are we facilitating or addressing in the community with this kind of a, of a change?
I guess my thought is, I'm not totally against changing the comprehensive plan, because it's adjacent to other condos, and other, it's connected there. I'm more worried about losing commercial, which is one, but also where this could go, up to sixteen, I think it's sixteen and a half acres, so sixteen units per acre, at forty feet high, in that area, and it's going to take away from the rest of the development that was the commercial, and, so I'm not totally against change of the comprehensive plan, I just wish we could, like I say, I like Mr. Bagley's idea, but we really can't rule on his idea, we gotta rule on more of the sixteen units per acre.
And just to help me get my brain wrapped around it, Councilmember Johnson, you said that this was zoned for larger density, or more density, but it's actually built to LDR three, which is what, ten units an acre?
The townhouses are.
The townhouses are?
Right.
And so, it would allow up to?
Sixteen units per acre.
Seventeen units per acre?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, so one and a half as many, rough estimate, if that were to happen, and then what's all the way around, and I'm pulling up my maps as well, kind of looking at that.
To the south is those townhomes on Trejo.
You've got a whole bunch of, you've got a whole bunch of homes, we've got some townhomes, so yeah, this is kind of that perfect storm where there's, it's connected to everything, so.
They have tried to sell them over the last year, it just hasn't worked.
Here's your comprehensive plan map.
If you, from planning and zoning, there were some differing opinions on that, too.
And I think part of the problem with this being commercial is it's off the beaten path. It's, it's a little bit more difficult for people to see and find, therefore, they, they don't want to be there.
It's across the railroad tracks, and further to the west, or whatever that is, from Yellowstone.
But one thing that was said in planning and zoning was, the businesses that are there were a little bit, I think they took a little bit of issue with saying that, because they feel like they're successful there, if you listen to the planning and zoning, so I think we've got to be careful how we frame that.
Yeah, I think they're more professional, they're destination-oriented.
Yeah.
So, are they, were they, were they testifying or speaking against the, the change, because they're hoping to have other businesses coming around them? Okay.
And I agree, it's been off the beaten path, it's definitely been a harder sell for commercial. It hit out there in the front area, you can see that, a little bit in the back, north corner, but anything down against those apartments have been.
Nothing.
Pushed away because of the apartments and that, so I can see both sides of it very clearly, it's just hard to sit there and say, "Okay," because we gotta, we gotta go off of sixteen units per acre.
Sir?
Yeah.
John Bagley, here, there isn't room for parking to go sixteen units per acre, according to what Allen said, we went for the medium density.
They won't ever meet.
Unless we, you know, unless we stacked or buried parking underneath, it wouldn't do that. The biggest complaint, one of the big concerns, that the, the two guys that testified against it in planning and zoning were that increased traffic, but that's not valid, because the, according to reports, there's, the amount of cars that move out of a residential, as opposed to a business area, is about one-fifth.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, the traffic is an issue, and to build a big complex in there, there's not enough parking, so the reason we went medium density is because we want a bigger, and I know, I even sell it to my wife, it's all, that's not the intent, we want to start building in the spring.
Just one thing, I want to say that, I think, to compare those, though, you do, it depends on what type of residential, and it depends on what density you're talking about. I don't think you can just across the board compare commercial with residential, depend, you know, there are factors that go into that, so.
So, planning and zoning, is their recommendation that we do?
That they reapprove it, yes.
It just?
It was not unanimous, though.
It was not unanimous?
You can read all those in your packet, you can read them.
Five to three.
Five to three.
And if it helps, Councilman Leeser, this is built out, these townhomes are built out at about twelve, a little over twelve units per acre.
Okay.
Steve, I didn't see a recommendation from staff. Is there, are they making a recommendation on this?
There are no recommendations against it. We, we're trying to steer away from having the planning staff make their recommendation, because quite frankly, they're not elected, and we want you guys to do your job. Staff recommendation going forward will likely be, if Keith feels like there's an infrastructure issue, that will certainly be put in the staff report, but beyond that, there were no, there are no issues with this, it can go, as has been pointed out, it is capable of sustaining either, either type.
Can I ask one more thing? And I know, maybe you're going to get mad at me for asking this, because you get mad a lot at my questions. Okay, so when Keith is looking at roads, though, and I'm not, I'm not saying that, like if it was built out to MDR one, so, didn't you say that you look at traffic flow for the whole, you know, the day, as opposed to like, high-traffic hours? Isn't that what you told me?
No, we look at, generally, we're trying to determine the peak hour, and what happens during the peak hour, right, when all the traffic is coming, what's going to happen there, that's what kind of drove this, the need for the signal that's going in at that intersection of Trejo and Elso, so that will help with that traffic flow in and out of that.
Because I know this is a bad time for me to be bringing up traffic around here, but, but my personal opinion is that I, I don't feel like our infrastructure is keeping up with our growth, and a lot of places even with your, what you're saying, especially on the west side where I live, I mean, Summerfield High School was all given the okay, but if you live there, you know that even without the construction, there were times of day when you just knew you couldn't get through there, like when the high school gets out and things like that, so that tells me that, you know, there's a big difference between capacity and comfort, so I think that's something else to consider, too.
But I, I do believe on this one here, where the light's going in, it's going to help a lot of that, and it, well, it's almost going, of traffic coming in, I guess that's not my concern, mine was just trying to balance it, because like I say, the planning and zoning definitely was on the change of comprehensive plan was split, but when it came to the next, it was only one stayed away, voted no, so, I'm saying, I'm kind of torn a little bit, because right against those apartments, I think it could be a good thing, I like what John's proposing, I think it'd be a great thing for the older people to have a place to come and be there, and be able to be designed that way, I just wish we could sit there and say we could hold to that.
I think it's a good fit, personally. It's a good thing, but. Okay, do we have any more questions, comments?
Good, thank you.
We have a motion.
Well, we've got to move.
Somebody's got to make a motion.
On this, so, we didn't second Brianna's motion, so let's try.
So, that means you're, you want to?
Yeah, I will make the motion that we approve the comprehensive plan map amendment change, resolution number 2024-13.
Okay, is there a second? Motion made by Councilmember Chambers, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against?
No.
This didn't have to be first read, this is, this is a resolution.
Resolution.
Okay, that one passes. So, now we go to item eight B, planning and zoning recommendation, recommendation to approve a zone change from Community Business Center to Medium Density Residential at the same location, approximately three twelve and three sixteen grand loop.
Same parcels, this is requesting now a zone change consistent with the comprehensive plan change that you just approved, that would make the two lots here, here and here developable as residential, as opposed to commercial.
Any more discussion on this matter?
They are requesting MDR one.
Do we, no questions, do we have a motion?
Hang on a second.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Thanks.
So, going back to that, Mr. Zalnba, on the specifications of what I brought forth in the comprehensive plan, where I said I couldn't do it in a comprehensive plan, can we do anything like that as we do the recommendation in a zone change? So, it's kind of held to that standard?
Can, it generally should have been handled at the public hearing process, so that it could have been deliberated as, you know, on its details. We generally don't encourage zoning for projects. The way to accomplish that is to possibly condition it on a maximum density, and I don't have the, we don't allow the proponent to present a project at the planning and zoning, because we don't, we don't want to zone for projects, we want to zone because it's the right type of growth for the neighborhood. Mr. Bagley has pointed out that there are geographic restrictions that would make this quite difficult to develop to a sixteen-unit-per-acre density, those being simply the limitations. You'd have to bury your parking and go hide with your buildings, and I'm not sure anybody knows, has figured out how to make money doing that yet, in Rexburgado.
Do we have a motion? No more questions, motion on this matter?
On the motion machine, I will make the motion that we approve the zone change from Community Business Center to Medium Density Residential One.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Chambers, is there a second?
It would be a first read, I mean, it's a motion to approve it and consider it first read.
Yeah, consider it first read.
Do we have a second? Okay, motion dies off the second, do we have another motion?
I make a motion that we do not approve a zone change from Community Business Center to Medium Density Residential One at the stated location.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Johnson, on to not approve the zone change, do we have a second on that matter? Do we have a second on that matter?
What is going on here?
Okay, that motion tells us, we gotta get off of...
Seriously, I don't understand what's happening.
I'm taking it a little personally because Keith and I are constantly bickering about who takes the most time at the Pope. And you're really making it difficult for me to go quickly.
That could be purposely to keep you up there for a while.
Well, if approved the comprehensive plan, then we need to approve the...
So, is the hesitancy to approve this, are you thinking that you want some kind of a condition on the zone?
Well, I know that we, we don't supposed to do it for the project. I, that's my thing. I love what John's proposing. I like it there, I think it works there.
Can I, maybe if I can ask Mr. Bagley a quick question. How many units were you hoping to build on these two lots total?
Total, most likely it'll be nine total.
Between the two of them?
Between the two of them. Now, if we got lucky, we might get eleven total. But with the MDR1, whatever it is, we can go within fifteen feet. I wanna have a thirty-foot wide footprint, so that I've got an honest two-car garage. I want these a walk-in lot. People that have, you get older, as old as me, you leave the country in the wintertime, you wanna lock out the door and drive away, and the door's locked, somebody else is shoveling the locks. In the summertime, somebody else is blowing the locks. This is for fifty-five, and that, this is for old guys. I don't wanna dance, and if you want some restriction on, I've got no heartburn with restrictions.
So, let me, let me cut you off there and posit a possible solution to your impasse. The, as we deduced, the construction to the south is built at, just right around twelve units per acre. If you were to restrict these two parcels to the zone change, however, no greater density than twelve, then Alan would, that would fit what he needs, because on the point six, he could build up to seven. He's only looking at four on that one, and on the point seven, he could build up to eight, maybe, which would, or maybe just seven still. You'd limit him to the zoning that is directly south of him, but given the MDR zoning, he gets the setback that he is hoping to accomplish, but he, it also makes it so, no matter who inherits this, if John were to not make it through the night because of the stress you've caused him, then the zone would only be approved for up to twelve units per acre.
And Steve, if we made that condition, is this something that would need to be remanded back to planning and zoning for this?
I don't think, I don't consider it to be substantive unless the applicant appeals it. It's giving, it's following the recommendation of them that it be converted to residential, but it's tying it to the development of residential most closely related to it, which is at twelve units per acre, instead of the sixteen units per acre. I don't know that that is what the council wants, but I think it accomplishes what John wants.
I'm good with that. I am good with that. I've got no...
I wanna mirror on that, I'll second it.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the zone change from community business center to medium density residential one, with the condition that either lot not exceed twelve units per acre.
Councilmember Chambers made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any other discussion?
I just have to say one thing, I know, really quickly, I just think it seems like we're sending mixed messages here about whether we vote on projects or on zones. So, it's still gonna be a no for me, but I know I'll be alone like I have been all night, and that's fine with me, that's just how I roll, I guess.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those against?
No.
Motion passes, first read, right?
Yes, first read.
Okay, our next one is item C, planning and zoning recommendation to approve a conditional use permit to allow a daycare home-based business in the low-density residential two zone, 100 North Fifth West. Thanks, Mr. Bagley.
Thank you. Can I ask one question? What's the procedure now?
You just sit on your hands and wait.
Okay.
Alan will notify you when it's final.
It takes three readings to pass the ordinance, so it'll be this time next month.
Okay, but the next reading should be easier than this reading.
We hope so. No, she's gonna still vote no, and...
That's not very nice.
Thank you.
Her highest chance of getting a broken leg is if she accepts a ride in one of your airplanes with you.
Hey, we were a lot nicer than planning and zoning, because they brought up about a plane crash in planning and zoning. I'm sorry, you're talking to a pilot.
This, Deborah has...
I just broke the map.
Broken the map. So, John, you'll, it will be read twice more, and unless something significant were to happen, then you'd be notified of that. It will be...
Thank you.
This is a home over on Fifth West, just south of, well, the easiest way to describe it is, it's directly west from Carriage Cove.
It's on the corner of Fifth West and...
Yep, right there, she's zooming in on it right now.
North.
So, Main Street is one block to the south of this, the fairground is one block to the north of this. They are seeking a conditional use permit to use it as a home business for daycare. They will have less than, I don't have notes...
No more than twelve.
Yeah, it's more than twelve.
No more than twelve.
They are coordinating with one of the neighbors in an attempt to come up with a better drop-off. They currently have a, you know, a limited approval from the Carriage Cove to allow drop-off and pickup along the driveway that comes out of Carriage Cove's parking lot.
They said they got a permission to do a drive-through.
I didn't, my notes don't say that they have that yet, but they are certainly working on it.
That's why they said in planning and zoning, that they did have...
Are any of you daycare providers? They may babysit, but they're not the applicants. So, I can't say with certainty whether they have obtained that approval or not. I do know that the hospital and the Theusen, the ownership group of Carriage Cove has given them temporary approval, and your condition, I would recommend that in the event that is revoked, that their CUP be revoked. Because dropping kids off and picking them up on the street is not, it doesn't actually meet our requirement for a home business. They have to have an off-street access point.
Any comments, questions?
Our recommendation was that it be approved with the conditions.
Mr. Chairman, after listening to the presentation, very well done, very professionally done, I think with all, dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's, I think, and I've driven past the property, it's actually being used as a daycare now, they're just trying to get it legally done, the way it's supposed to be. I, I think this, I think it's a great opportunity. Daycare is a terrible problem, we can't, don't have enough, we know there's not enough in the county. I think it's a very appropriate use. As long as they meet the conditions of the drop-off, I would certainly approve this.
So, you're making a motion?
In fact, I would make that motion if, unless there's other comments. I would move that we approve this, the conditional use permit for the daycare based at 100 North Fifth West.
Motion made by...
Is he adding the part about the parking? Are you adding that to your motion?
Wasn't, didn't you say that was approved with the condition of the parking?
We need to approve it with the condition.
Okay, then I would add that...
The drop-off, right?
That, they conditioned on the approval and construction of an appropriate drop-off for the children.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Eric Erickson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those against? That's approved. And this a first reading, too?
Aren't they all just...
No.
But before, aren't they just considered first reading if it doesn't say?
Initial use is not an...
No, I'm not talking about this one, I'm talking about the ones we did before. Aren't they just considered first read?
Yeah, it's just good to identify which reading you're on at any given moment. So, if the conditional use permit does not require an initial reading, you're approving it tonight.
Oh, it's been approved then. Item D, approval of recording extension request for Summerfield Division 13 plat...
You got a first and a second, did you actually call for a vote?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, sorry, I got distracted.
Approval for a recording extension request for Summerfield Division 13 plat at approximately 900 South, 2400 West, this will be number 23-00373.
So...
So, Zollinger, you're on board again.
Summerfield did what we would like every subdivision to do. They planned in advance the whole. The problem that has created is, we have a provision in our ordinance that says a plat must be recorded within a fixed amount of time after the approval, or they must seek an extension. They're not ready to start building number thirteen yet, and their time for recording it is going to come soon, and so they're asking for an extension that would simply allow them to keep plat thirteen viable while they build out the ones that we approved recently. So, this is a formality hanging on to what they had approved when they did their master plan.
So, we're not approving anything new, we're just extending there?
No, thirteen does not bring anything new into it, we're simply extending the proposal that was submitted fifteen years, how long has Summerfield been in construction?
About fifteen years.
Any discussion, questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the extension for Summerfield Division 13 plat.
Motion made by Councilmember Colin Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Eric Erickson. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? It passes. Thank you, Mr. Zollinger.
I believe that concludes my stand-in performance for Alan.
You've probably been at the record time. We have no second or third readings, and so it takes us to our consent calendar, which is approval of the minutes of the September 18, 2024 meeting and approve the city of Rexburg bills. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar and pay the bills.
Yeah, I'm not the mayor, but I'll take the motion as...
Oh, sorry.
Motion.
You're council chairman, sorry.
Motion made by Councilmember Eric Erickson, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reese, or any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? It passes. Okay, now it takes us to, we need a motion moving to executive session. As per statute, state statute 74-2061C, to acquire an interest in real property not owned by a public agency, and F, to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of, and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated by a manly likely to be litigated. The mere presence of legal counsel in the discussion does not satisfy this requirement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A motion made by Councilmember Colin Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Eric Erickson. Okay, we need a roll call vote, Mariana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember C Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember E Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reese?
Yes.
Council President Walker?
Yes. Okay, so we're moving to executive session. I'd like to thank you students for being here, hope you learned something today. Now, excuse you, we have to go into executive session, which means it's just by those who are invited.
Your obligation to be here for Councilmember Reese's class is fulfilled.
You can hang around, when we come out, executive session will adjourn, but we'll probably just adjourn.
So, I think you ought to get some extra, extra credit for that.
I'll see what I can do.
Thanks for coming.